The April Fool's Day Planning Board Meeting to Order.
(laughing).
First...
Really, no meeting?
Yeah. You're right.
Yeah.
First on the agenda is approval of or non-approval of the minutes.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the minutes of March 11th into March 25th as amended.
Okay. It's been moved that they be approved as amended.
March 25th to 26th.
Twenty minutes.
Oh, okay, sir.
Yeah. Could I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Approval not required plans, and we don't have any. So we move on to public hearing, and we have a new one. This is in regard to, the applicant is the Massachusetts Department of Transportation, to remove a 36-inch diameter tree located at 700 West Falmouth Highway, West Falmouth, under Chapter 31 of the Acts of 2006, Chapter 178- Scenic Roads of the Code of Falmouth and Section 15(c) of Chapter 40 MGL. You guys are gonna have to bear with me tonight, I got a miserable cold. The letter from Mass DEP states that they received notification from the homeowner stating the tree roots are damaging the foundation of the home. Upon review by Mass DOT, the tree is located within the state highway layout and warrants removal. So they are thereby, with the laws, requesting permission to proceed with removal of said tree upon concurrence by the Planning Department. I've not ever dealt with this before. We've got notices, okay.
There were ten notices were sent to Abotters by regular mail on March 21st. No notation of any received. It was in the Falmouth Enterprise. Publishing dates, March 21st, March 25th. It was also CC to the Falmouth Historical Commission, Falmouth Historic District Commission, Tree Wood and Mass DOT, and the Abotters.
How do we proceed with this, Brian?
Then it's a plan review, and is someone here for the applicant?
Okay, thank you, because I've not had this before. So, for the applicant, and come up to the podium, state your name, please.
Jamie Gormley. Yeah, the tree is an old, old tree, I'd love to keep it, but it's undermining my house. It's raised the house up in one section about three inches, and it's a rubble foundation, 1750 house. So, that's my principal reasoning behind it. I have some additional pictures I took, if you want.
That's okay. I gather that, from the letter by Mass DOT, they agree with your need.
Yes. The tree is huge, it goes right across the entire West Falmouth Highway as well.
Any clues to how old the tree is?
Old.
Are there any other questions by Board members?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes, Paul.
I understand the request is on behalf of the homeowner, it's not because of right-of-way issue on the roadway itself.
Correct.
Is that correct? Thank you.
Ralph.
It's been a safety concern for years, just because of it overhanging.
Yes, sir. Is it, is there a sidewalk between the tree and your house?
My house, the tree, sidewalk road.
Okay, so the sidewalk, 'cause on the outside of the tree. So is this, is the tree uplifting the sidewalk also?
It's dirt.
It's a dirt, dirt highway, or dirt sidewalk.
Dirt sidewalk, yeah.
Well, is it mounding it up, or is there any indication that the roots are...
It's, well, you can see from those pictures.
I, I, I...
It's mounded up probably two feet up off of the grade of the sidewalk.
Okay.
And the people over the years have cut those roots. I had cut a huge root that went underneath the house this bit.
And have you had any, have you had an engineer or anyone like that look at, look at your situation, or is it strictly your own evaluation?
You can look at the house and see it grouting, and I did not have an engineer, no.
Okay, thank you. You, you're the own, your address is 700 West Falmouth Highway?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm sorry, I missed your name when you...
Gormley, Jamie Gormley.
L...
G-O-R.
M-L-E-Y. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have questions of Mr. Gormley?
Where is it? What's over the tree of the house?
Excuse me?
Oh, I see.
What's old? Oh, I'd say the house, I have all the pictures, the tree not being there.
I have a question, where's the property line?
The letter from the DOT says that the tree is located within the state highway layout.
I know, but the tree's, looks like it could be on both. I'm trying to understand, is it also on his own property as well?
As far as I can see, it's on both.
That's, that's, my question is, is, that makes a difference to me.
Okay. Any other questions? Yes, Ralph.
I'm sorry, I don't have a question.
Okay. Other questions?
Did Ralph see these he was questioning?
Yes, he did. I think it started down there. Okay. No, so he saw all that.
Can we see the paper, the paper one?
The paper one, okay.
Does it see the entire tree?
I don't see the mounting.
Does anybody from the public have questions?
That's my question.
Yes?
There's not much mounting there. And it is sort of paved.
Good evening, Maureen Harlow-Hawks, 9 Old Dock Road, West Falmouth. And I went out, I've looked at the tree, and I would like to submit for the record. I made a copy for each of you, I'm sorry it was so late, but I just got back.
Thank you.
And I know this was gonna be...
Well, I'll play it.
Ryan, I take the chair. Thank you.
This is just, this is just being passed around.
The reason I'm here this evening is, over the years, we've lost a lot of trees in our village. The state has done projects over the last 25 years and has never replaced a tree in our village. And if I could read into the record, my letter to you, which is the planning board members, I would respectfully request a continuance regarding the removal of 36-inch diameter tree located at 700 West Falmouth Highway by Mass Department of Transportation, DOT. The tree slated for removal has an enormous crown that offers shade and increased air quality. The aesthetics of this tree are irreplaceable. The roadways in Falmouth are beautiful and enhanced by these large trees, so the removal creates an instant degradation of the scenic views we enjoy year-round. The officers of the West Falmouth Village Association were unaware of this request and would like to have time to inform the residents and taxpayers of West Falmouth Village, so they may weigh in on the request by the DOT. If you choose not to vote for a continuance and vote to allow the removal of this beautiful shade tree, please require the DOT to plant and maintain several large shade trees, three-and-a-half-inch caliper greater or more, in the state road layout along this section of Route 28A to maintain the scenic roadway we deserve to enjoy. And the reason I say this is, if you go down 28A, this is probably one of the most substantial shade trees in over a half a mile. Actually, there's one to the north, which is an elm, is right on the side of the road, which is very substantial also, that gets hit all the time. And the, and I know, I'm sorry through the chair, but I think Mr. Cromley, is it? I'm sorry?
Gormley.
Gormley. How long have you lived through the chair? Have you lived at that residence?
Three years.
I was just curious, because the, the tree's been there for a long time, and I'm glad Mr. Herbst asked about a structural engineer to check the foundation. The house has been there since 1750, and it hasn't gone that far. From my records of going through the Book of West Falmouth, in the Book of Falmouth, and from the forest to the bay, the tree is approximately 98 years old, could be older. The sidewalk issue, I walked it today. It is a dirt rubble sidewalk, and that was due to the 28A drainage project that they did in the early 90s, and they never gave us back our sidewalks. This area is flat, the roots are about 18 inches above ground, but the area where people walk is flat. The, the major concern I have is, if we lose these, it does change the look of villages, and it's very substantial. I do commiserate with Mr., with the owner, the homeowner at 700 West Falmouth Highway. I have a very similar tree at my house, I spend a lot of money on it to maintain it for that exact reason of keeping that look in the village. This tree, the state has never spent any money on it. I had a, I asked Allenby Tree Service to go out and look at it today, and his recommendations, which prior to this hearing, I did not know was a structural problem in the basement of this gentleman's home, that it was more of an issue of just getting rid of the tree for other purposes. But pruning and cabling and feeding would help with it, and there is bleeding canker, but 80% of the canopy is in absolutely perfect health. So if, again, if this does move forward, and it is voted to take this tree down, I would strongly urge this board to require the DOT to plant substantial trees and maintain them in these roadways, because this is a 36-inch caliper tree, it is beautiful, it does not shed as much as many of them on 28A, 'cause I drive it every day, and sometimes we all have to take ownership of things that are around us, including a tree. And maybe the homeowner could take a little more effort to try and preserve it. I think he will be very shocked with his, with how much that tree shades and protects his home throughout the summer, and gives him a lot of benefit, and it gives the village an extremely large amount of benefit. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Hayward.
Nancy Hayward, Chase Road, West Falmouth. When I read the notice in the newspaper, I did not find, I am a member of Falmouth, I'm the vice chair of the Falmouth Historical Commission, I did not learn about this through the Historical Commission. When I saw this number in the newspaper, I went looking for this tree. I am totally shocked that this tree is in the road layout, because it sort of makes me wonder where the road layout is there. I would totally second what has been said about requiring some replacement if this tree is taken down. Nearby, on the other side of the street, at 681 West Falmouth Highway, which was the Red Barn Antique, some of you may have been aware of what went on at that property. This is all in the West Falmouth Historic District. And I neglected to say, to start with, which I may have missed the first sense or two, 28A is listed as a scenic road. It is a state highway, but it's listed in the Historical Commission, and I think probably at Mass Historical, as a scenic road. I certainly would second the issue of, if this tree has to come down, that there be some replacement, because at 681, where all this devastating change has gone on, I noticed that there's some landscaping issue which is going to take down some, what I consider street trees in front of that place. And this is, that's 681, this is 700, this is really going to lead, leave a void in there as far as visual impact of the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Nathaniel Ross, West Falmouth Highway, 475 West Falmouth Highway. I also would like to request that you consider a continuance tonight. I'd like to see a fair hearing on, on the subject, and I don't think that the public is aware of what's going on, and I would appreciate that. I think the shade tree law, or the laws that are enforced for shade trees are there for a reason. This isn't an average tree. This is maybe one of three or four of the nicest trees in West Falmouth. It's at a symbiotic relationship with the structure. I'm not an engineer, but there'll be consequences to removing the tree to the foundation as the tree rots away and decomposes underneath the building that could be more significant to what the owner claims to be experiencing now. I just would really appreciate your understanding that there really needs to be a better public discussion on this tree. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hello, I'm Susan Moran, West Falmouth Highway, and I'm also the president of the West Falmouth Village Association, but I'm here speaking as an individual, because the Village Association did not receive any notification of this hearing. I personally received notice by email while I was in Boston today, and just before coming to the hearing, just had a quick chance to grab and take a look at Chapter 178, Section 15(c), that the hearing notice came to me by email under. And as has been described, there's a reason that the Commonwealth has this special provision for dealings with scenic, scenic roads, and it's part of what the, the folks here have already presented. And I also personally took a look at the tree. It's not difficult to find, it's, it's quite impressive and unusual, and I think there is good reason to think about continuing the hearing and giving the homeowner a chance to get an engineer and maybe look at a solution that benefits both the public as well as the homeowner, so I appreciate your consideration of that request. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I move that we continue this, ma'am.
Wait a minute, whoa.
You may want to wait until such time as the public has completed the discussion.
Yeah. No, I was about to ask, is there anyone else who wishes to comment on this? That was an assumption.
I assumed it would work.
You can come back up again.
I'm just trying to get this straight. The tree is a great tree, beautiful tree, everybody agrees to that. It's undermining my house, that's my biggest problem. If I could save it, I'd, I'd love to, but it's, it's, the roots are so enormous that it is uplifting the house, shade or not. I mean, it's a, the house was built in 1750, where's the historical significant value of that outweighs the saving of the tree, the house? I don't know. What happens if a storm comes and it uproots the house?
I think what these people are suggesting, from what I was hearing, is that you contact somebody, an engineer of some sort, and I don't know what kind of engineer that would be, or a specialist in trees, I know, that's the problem, to gain an opinion as to whether there is another way of dealing with it that would save your tree and save your house.
I move that we continue.
Wait a minute.
I'm gonna make the motion.
We're not there yet. Jim has a...
I need some additional information. I would really like, I asked briefly, but no one answered it, I would really like to see where the property line is here. We're, we're talking about something and making motions, and we don't even know what we're talking about. I, I think I need to see how much of this tree is in the, in the right, in the state property, and how much is on private property, before we go any further. So, I'm in favor of continuance until we get more information. It's a state highway. These old houses were built right next to the goat paths, the cart paths, because people were... Are you gonna guarantee that, Richard? ...have neighbors, so it's a state highway.
Jim wants to know where the line is, and that's illegitimate.
There's nothing remarkable about the fact that this would be, this located on, on this lawn would still be in the state highway layout. That's what it is. Now, I, I think we need to hear from an engineer, that's why I want to have a continuance, to make sure that it is absolutely necessary to take down the tree. If it's a choice between the house and the tree, the tree goes, and I want to make sure of that, and that's why I want to hear from an engineer.
And I understand that.
Okay, that's why I'm moving forward.
But, but we don't even need a, a motion to do that, because it's like a site plan review, we just continue it.
All right.
No?
Why don't we get all testimony in, and then we'll make a motion, and we'll see if we can...
Okay, because...
This is a hearing, it's not, it's like...
But it's, all right.
You're in, you're in hearing mode.
This is a new one for me, so excuse me on that.
But you're in hearing mode.
Okay. Are there any, yes, Paul?
I agree with Jim, there's other information I'd like to know, I'd like to know what species it is, what the lifespan of the tree, it's an oak, and well, there's several different types of oaks.
Yeah.
If its age is 98 years, how much longer has it got to live, things like that. And if there is an engineering solution, and where the property line is, and things like that, so...
This tree has been radically, radically cut over the years, and I'm sure you can attest to that. I mean, huge limbs lifted, left off it. To what extent, I don't know, you know, how much more it's gonna live. It hangs over two lanes of the highway. I don't know. So I'm getting a tree engineer, structural engineer?
Yep.
Yeah?
I don't know.
What's a tree engineer?
If it's convinced us that there really is a threat to the house that can't be avoided, and it comes back. Richard, hold on. Otherwise, you look for something else.
Brian, you wanted to comment.
If the board wants to get additional information, or if I've got my notes here, all I can do is just contact the property, and make sure that we know what the board's wishes are. We want a structural engineer's report, and we want, they just go back from the tree warrant.
Yes.
In regards to the condition of the tree.
Great.
Yeah, they probably want to...
Yeah. Those are the three issues that I was hearing. Okay.
So I'm, I'm gonna go and get my homework done and come back?
Correct. And Brian will set up the time at which you would come back to, and he wants to speak with you to set all of this in motion.
Okay. So I'll wait to hear from Brian?
Sure.
Probably better if you call Brian.
So what you'll have to do tonight, rather than the public, you have to do this project, you have to continue the hearing to a specific place, date, and time.
Okay.
Just like it's a special permit.
Uh-huh.
So you would need a motion to continue this hearing to Tuesday, let's say April 15.
Okay.
Seven o'clock, seven o'clock here in Town Hall. And that might be a motion that you make, if we're not ready to go, you would continue it again, but that's your next meeting.
Okay.
I saw movement.
Okay. Now, a second, please.
Second.
Everybody has been moved and seconded, are there any other questions or comments? Yes, Paul?
I'd like to address two issues. One is, in spite of the fact that the clerk indicated where these notices were sent out, several people tonight said they didn't, were not aware of it, and one in particular, the vice chair of one of the town committees, didn't know about it, it's a little disturbing, because the information was sent out. And there, there's a problem there, if people are not receiving that information, even though it was sent out. And secondly, I heard people say, if you take down a tree, the state should put trees in its place. I'm not sure we can make the state do that, and I'm not sure they have an ability to do that, so I think we want to be a little cautious about what we, we suggest, because they, maybe they will, but I think we need to find out, find that out before making that kind of recommendation.
All right, Brian?
I just need to make sure the board understands that you're operating under a town meeting vote, a chapter of the code, voted in 2004, and it's very specific, please take some time to read it. You're authorized to notice to the town board, and Abotters within a certain distance. Town meeting, not start anyone, so make sure that everyone understands that you are operating procedurally correct.
Okay. We haven't had a chance to look at this either, which is another very good reason to continue the hearing.
I looked it up, and I couldn't find it, but it's in the packet.
Okay. So it's been moved and seconded, that we continue this hearing until April 15. Any other?
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock, here in Town Hall, right here in this room.
Proceed procedurally correct, but they...
If there are no other comments, yes, Jim?
Is it clear what additional information we've requested?
Yes. Brian has...
We realize the structural report, and a report from the tree warrant has been species of say, against life, plus, the hearing is continued in its whole, so this other issue...
One other thing that we should know is whether or not the state will be replanting trees, if it's a state job.
The board knows, the state legislature voted, they voted town meeting, for a special act, a special act of the legislature that put this portion of the state highway under your jurisdiction. That's how you are operating. Otherwise, state highways are typically not under local control. 2004, they voted this bylaw, plus a special act of the legislature that put here, you are the authorization of Historic District, there's some preconditions.
We can order that.
So you can order.
Okay.
Back to the beginning?
Okay. Very good. Okay, if there, yes, Bob?
If you could take some pictures of, of where it's damaging the house, is it crawl space, or is it basement?
Crawl space.
Okay.
But I mean, the whole floor is lifted up inside, I can certainly indicate that.
Yeah, anything like that will help.
Yeah. I'll do that with the engineer.
Thank you. Now, I need a vote of the board, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stay. Thank you.
Okay.
I thank all of you for coming. We move on now to decisions. First, the applicant, Charles M. and Thomas S. Crane, defended a plan to subdivide 4.2 acres into three lots located at 38 Juniper Point Road, Woods Hole. It's time for discussion on this, folks. We close the hearing, and we've got the current plan in front of us. Comments, questions? Anything?
I've wrestled with this ever since I went out there to look at it, I just, I really don't know what to make of it.
In what way?
Just the access, and the fact that you really can't improve the road because of the wall, the latins, and, and just the sharing of a driveway or access to the lots. I don't know how that sets, I've been on the board long enough to account of these type situations, so I'm not sure if these are common, or if they're happened before.
She disregarded the internal drivers. Remember that subdivision control law, you're laying out a way, which provides frontage to the buildable portion of the lot, so the driveways are irrelevant. So the question I view is whether or not Juniper Point Road and Hoozie are made out sufficient enough for the fire truck to get to that point, which is the frontage of the lot. Do you require it to be wider, or paved it, or where it might be, but that's the purpose of the subdivision control, access to the, to the buildable portion of the lot. Remember Marlene's tutorial, something months ago? It's not a special permit, it's not a zoning, you're not a zoning lawyer. It's a very restricted enabling statute, that's simply spaced out. You're concerned about, you know, fire truck roll up the frontage of a lot, you need access to that frontage, and from there to the buildable portion of the lot. So there's no escarpments, there's no river in your way, or something along those lines. It's very narrow the focus is.
I play for the, the question, we would see many, many houses in this town that are just like 200 yards of dirt.
I just think of frontages...
No, probably, you know, a highway, that's not the issue.
I, I just think of frontage as having a road along it, that's, that's where I got started. So, it doesn't, and what I'm learning is that that doesn't necessarily have to be the case.
Right. What's on the ground is what's on the paper.
Okay.
Jim?
I'm not concerned what's on the paper. What, do we have any referrals from the fire department, that what's on the ground is actually safe and...
and manageable from their position?
Let's see. They emailed, let's see, Fire Rescue requests 14-foot driving surface, eighteen feet clear width. There's a fire agent on the property, we're sure of how it's huge or private. It's obscured by a tree. It's a... So they would request a 14-foot driving surface, eighteen feet clear.
Does the plan show that?
They request it, but does the plan show it? Is the question.
It does. But does the plan show? Because I don't have the thought, so I'm going to disavow it.
Okay.
If you look at the page that has the construction drawn, or can I answer that question?
Can I add a little bit more?
Yeah, go ahead, Jim.
We're being asked to waive an awful lot of stuff, but I understand the private ownership of this little dead-end street. And I think what, as far as I'm concerned, we're really just to make sure that the fire department is safe with what's going on. And if they want to waive not building all these other things, we're not supposed to worry about zoning. We're supposed to worry about getting in and out in safety, and I would like to focus our attention on that. Fire Department says it's good. I'm good with it.
This is 26 feet here, so...
Yeah, it's a...
There's 12 there.
Juniper Point Road, where the cul-de-sac is, is 17 to 18 foot wide. The pavement.
And they call for 14 to 18 feet clear? So it sounds like we're there. Is that right?
Yeah, so if we're clear with what the fire department requests, then...
Fire department went out there and took a look at it. Okay, and they're okay with it? Okay. We're all sounding good tonight.
Yeah, we sound good. You sound good, too.
We're all sounding good tonight. Yes, Doug? Oh, Ralph, okay.
I understand Bob's question here. When you look at the radius, 62.8 feet on the cul-de-sac for lot number two, it certainly doesn't include enough of the paved area to gain access to lot number two. How do we deal with that, Mr. McGrath?
Referring to the definitive plan, there are easements shown. The intent is that the roadway that continues beyond the layout will be shared, the driveway.
Okay, so then lot two has an easement on lot three to access the Juniper Point Road extension in the cul-de-sac?
Yes.
Did I say that right?
Yes.
Because there's only a small, very small portion of the proposed paved area that intersects the Juniper Point Road for lot number two.
That's right, but there is an easement that's going to be granted over the impaved roadway for...
For two, lot number two?
Right.
From lot number three?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions for the board? Okay. We do have a draft motion if someone wishes to make that.
I don't know. The planning board won't approve the application of Charles M. and Thomas S. Crane under Article Four, Divinity Plans, Chapter 305, Subdivision Regulations, with the title Falmouth for a plan entitled quote, definitive subdivision plan prepared for Charles M. and Thomas S. Crane in Falmouth, close quote, prepared by Holmes and McGrath Incorporated dated December 10th, 2013, revised February 10th, 2014, scale one inch equals 40 feet, together with the roadway plan and profiles of the same title revised February 10th, 2014, with the following findings and conditions. Findings, this application seeks to extend Juniper Point and Hinckley Roads in order to create a three-lot subdivision. Today, the site is occupied with two single-family dwellings, together with a boat shop, shed, and detached garage structures. The list of waivers from the planning board's rules and regulations in the form of a letter dated February 12th, 2014, from Holmes and McGrath Incorporated, has been submitted and is incorporated by reference here. Except as modified by this decision, the board finds these waivers acceptable, consistent with the typical roadway designs found in the neighborhood, while still providing suitable access through the lots in the subdivision. Waivers, the planning board grants those waivers found in the Holmes and McGrath letter of February 12th referenced above, except as modified by the conditions below. Conditions, one, Town water shall be installed in Juniper Point Road extension together with a fire hydrant under the direction of the utility manager. Two, a suitable bond or covenant shall be submitted within six months of this decision, or the board may take action to rescind this plan. Lots one and three shall not be subject to this covenant.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Are there further questions or comments?
Yeah, I just have one question. It says the applicant seeks to extend Juniper Point and Hinckley Roads. Is that intention paved? The extension will be paved? I don't see anything about paved in here. And I was under the understanding that this new section is going to be paved.
Look at your first paragraph, you'll see subdivision plan cited, together with a roadway plan and profiles of the same title.
Oh, okay, there it is. Okay.
That adds all the construction.
Okay.
Okay. Yes, Jim?
I just want to make sure, such a narrow road, and it sounds like it's very close, that we condition that they have to maintain the minimum standards that the fire department has spelled out. I think we're within a foot right now. And as we know, trees can grow, and this is a very, very narrow street, and that's our only comments seem to be here on safety, and I'd like to see that be maintained, is if we condition that they have to maintain the clearance that the fire department recommended.
The condition, the road that was constructed in the subdivision control, the board, you give them a good start. And once you release the bonds and covenants, just want to make sure you understand.
I understand. Then how much, what we're talking, then I need to know what degree we're talking, how far away from what the fire department recommended and what the street is, what we're talking. We talking inches here?
They bought it a 14-foot travel surface and 18 feet clear.
And I thought I heard a number of 17.
Yeah, you did.
And that's where my question is. It sounds like I'm not clear on that.
I was scaling the pavement width on the plan and profile. The pavement width is 17 to 18 feet.
What is the clear on either side?
Oh, it's greater than that because it's 17, 18 feet of pavement. So there's, I don't have the photographs, but there's space on each side.
My concern was the 17. That's...
That's fine, Jim.
It sounds like it's okay.
Okay. Yes, Paul?
I'm just curious. Second condition says, "Soon will bond or covenant shall be submitted." What is going to be included in that covenant?
You have a standard form of covenant that you use, that they can't sell or convey. In this case, it's a lot of...
Does it have to do with the right-of-way or...
Sorry?
Does it have to do with these waivers?
Covenant is a form of guarantee that they won't be able to build on their new lot two until they put the road in as per this plan's and your condition decision. Covenant essentially is a promise that runs with the land, and it's typically inserted before a bond comes in, usually a bond comes in with it.
I understand a covenant, but I don't know why it's a covenant or a bond. Why wouldn't it just be a covenant?
It's up to the applicant's discretion. They get to choose. They can do either one.
Ralph?
Yeah, Brian, could you answer this for me? The width is an issue, but how about the uplimbing or up, when you trim the trees up vertically? These photos here show a very recent, it seems to me, a rather low overhang of trees adjacent to the roadway. What, how does the town, if the town accepts the roadway plan like that, how do we guarantee to the fire department that they can get their vehicles down there without banging into the stuff that's overhanging?
Usually require a box for them to go down, something that's 10 feet high, tops. So if they're down below 10 feet, the truck's going to go through, though, because they'll absorb the scratch. But they'd have to be pretty low for it to preclude that.
If you look at these photographs that Mr. McGrath provided to us, it looks like they're pretty low, and it looks like they overhang a lot. I just wondered, when we talk about together with, in the first paragraph, that together with the roadway plan and profiles of the same, you know, how do we guarantee that that is at least as long as down to the paved area which they're proposing? How do we ensure that they uplift or uplimb? What do they call that? It's uplimbing. How do we guarantee that that's done so that it complies with the standards that we require from the town, so that emergency vehicles can pass without hitting it?
Your rules and regulations are silent about uplimbing trees. In the past, when we've gone out to some of these subdivisions that are heavily wooded, Toby Lane is an example, you were on the board then, I think, Ralph. The fire department requested that they limb back some of these trees because they didn't, maybe they couldn't get through, and it precluded their access. I don't have anything here that indicates that it's an issue today. If it's a concern at this point, you may just want to add condition three that states...
They maintain...
That they should be, the fire department should review the limbs along Juniper Point Road to make sure that they are of suitable height prior to releasing bond or covenant.
Right. You just said that our regulations are silent on that, so I would, I think that this board should entertain an additional condition that the roads be maintained in some language in there that guarantees the fire department access down this road and will avoid, you know, the overhanging vegetation.
Make the motion. We'll amend the motion.
Can you just let me finish explaining what you can and can't do? You can have a condition that when they construct this road, according to that profile, that at construction time, they go out and limb the trees, if it's an issue. They'll come back to you and say, we've done all the work. We've put the road in, we've limbed the trees if necessary. We would like a release of covenant or bond. After that, there's no perpetual maintenance, there's no guarantee that the fire department's going to go down there and find a limb to get their vehicle scratched, or they'll have to jump out and zip a chainsaw and whack it down. But you can get them off to a good start. That's all you can do.
All right, well, then I would like to offer an amendment to the motion. And that would be number three, that the applicant ensure that the roadway, the proposed roadway, has adequate clearance from adjacent trees in relation to the width of the roadway. I don't know, I don't know how else to say it.
Okay, I think I understand.
Ralph? Can I help you, Ralph?
Sure.
Amendment would be that prior to the release of the covenant, the fire department shall inspect and certify that there is sufficient clearance from overhanging limbs for its emergency vehicles to reach the premises.
That sounds fine to me. It's your motion, I'll second it, Richard.
Okay, well, that's your second. I'll second, okay.
Anyway, it's been moved and seconded.
I withdraw my initial amendment, and I accept your amendment, and I second it.
That's okay. All in favor of the amendment?
Wait a minute. It's been moved and seconded, and you have a comment, Jim?
Well, I just think we have, we could be a little bit more specific if I understand it from listening to Brian. We have a number talking about the fire department says 18 feet clear, and Brian talks about a 10-foot box. I think that's what we specify. They get it to there, and we're ready to go.
Whatever the fire department requires.
Well, I think they already have said 18 foot clear, and Brian suggested maybe it...
10 feet up.
10 feet high, and that sounds like if we get that now, that's all we can ask for.
Yeah.
So be real specific, and just go for that, is my recommendation.
I'll withdraw my amendment, and you make that amendment.
I'm just offering up with what you guys think.
I think it's better to just leave it to whatever the fire department requires.
I'm fine with that, too.
Whether the fire department will certify, which is one of the...
Yes.
Either way.
So it has been moved, and it has been seconded as an amendment to the prime motion. Are there any further comments on that? Okay, now, vote on the amendment. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Now, is there anything further on the main motion?
I just, I noticed a couple of things. Paul had mentioned he didn't know why there was a bond. I believe it's because Juniper Point Road is going to be paved, a little more is going to be paved. And Bob had said, what about the improvement of Hinckley Road? I think that's just a gravel roadway, and it's going to stay. Isn't that correct, McGrath?
Yes.
Just a couple of things I noticed. That's it?
Okay.
Any questions or comments?
Are we ready to vote on the main motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Okay. Moving on now to Cent...
Thank you very much. By the way, rubbish trucks go down there, so we don't really need to be aware of the fire trucks. The hearing was close, I couldn't offer that to after you, but...
We're moving on to CenterCorp LLC, Site Plan Review to Construct a 6,992-square-foot retail tire store on .89 acres with associated parking, drainage, and landscaping. We'll be looking for discussion on this, and then we do have a draft motion if we are all satisfied. So, discussion, please.
Did you want to entertain any discussion on the draft, or do you want it read first?
We can have it read first if you like.
All right.
Okay, do you want to make the motion?
Do you want me to read the motion?
Sure, and then we can discuss the whole thing if you like.
Motion that the planning board vote to approve the application of CenterCorp Falmouth LLC under Article 39, Site Plan Review of the zoning bylaw for a plan entitled CenterCorp Falmouth LLC 93 and 111 T-Ticket Highway Falmouth, Massachusetts, prepared by Milliken Associates Architecture, Planning, and Kelly Engineering Group Incorporated, dated December 18th, 2013, revised February 28th, 2014. Scale is noted, together with landscaping plan entitled Landscape Planting Plan 93 and 111 T-Ticket Highway, prepared by Hoff Design Incorporated, dated 12/19/2013, revised 2/27/2014. Scale one inch equals 20 feet, with the following findings and conditions. Findings, this application is for 6,637-square-foot retail building for the sales and service of automobile tires. No automobile repairs, a use that would require a special permit from the Board of Appeals, have been applied for. The site is zoned business two, which allows retail sales as a matter of right, and is currently occupied by a single-family dwelling. The site is being developed in conjunction with the existing fast-food restaurant on the adjacent parcel. The site planning has taken into consideration both uses. There is a shared curb cut for T-Ticket Highway. The interior calculation has been designed, that's a bit of a typo there, designed to accommodate truck deliveries and avoid traffic patronization of fast-food restaurant, of the fast-food restaurant. and avoid traffic patronization of the fast-food restaurant. A driveway opening has been provided to the Falmouth Mall, which will avoid traffic leaving the site in order to travel to the mall. Therefore, the planning board finds the traffic mitigation requirements of the zoning bylaw are satisfied. The drainage for the site has been prepared by a registered engineer and reviewed and approved by the Engineering Division of the Department of Public Works. The project will abandon the old cesspools used on-site in favor of a Title V septic system. This site is in the Phase 1 sewer service area for Little Pond. Therefore, the planning board will not require enhanced nitrogen removal from the septic system. Conditions: One, the plan shall be constructed as approved. Any changes shall be reviewed by the planning board to determine if a modification of this decision is necessary. Pursuant to Paragraph 240-133B of the zoning bylaw, no permit or full or partial occupancy shall be issued until the planning board is satisfied that the conditions of this approval have been met. Two, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall obtain a curb cut... excuse me. A curb-opening permit from the Department of Public Works Engineering Division and Mass DOT for the entrance on Route 28. All work performed within the public right-of-way shall be conducted under the direction of the town engineer.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Now, discussion. Ralph?
Yes, Brian. The very... the condition number two, we're asking for a curb-opening permit on Route 28, and I didn't think there was one. I... can I... excuse me, Paul. Can I see the plan? No, I didn't want to see the plan. Where's the curb cut opening on 28? I thought it was shared by the... shared by... I mean, it was the existing one for the fast-food restaurant.
Once you change the use of a piece of property along the state highway or open it up to utilities or close those, any existing curb cuts, the engineering division... the engineering divisions get involved. So it's a standard condition that the board typically imposes, that they go see the state and/or the local engineer to make sure that the utility cuts are in place. If they're closing curb cuts, it's done properly. And if there's a change of use going from a single-family house to a commercial entity, then the district engineer gets involved.
I know. But I'm looking at the plan, and I thought that the curb cut was the one that's being used currently by Burger King and that there were no changes to that curb cut.
Can I just...
Excuse me. I'm talking to Brian.
Let me just finish. There might be an... once you change... let's go back to the subject. There is an existing curb cut there for the Burger King.
Right.
We are now going to share that curb cut.
Right.
To share that curb cut, you need to go see the state engineer because there's a change of... A, you're sharing it, and B, there's a change of use. That you're gonna close that existing curb cut for the single-family home. You're gonna take that single-family home and put in a tire store. So there's two things that implicate going to see the district engineer or the town engineer. A, you're changing the use, and now you're sharing that curb cut. You're closing a curb cut, and there'll be some sort of utilities being brought in perhaps on that curb cut. Whatever it might be, it's sort of a standard condition of the planning board. Go see the district engineer. Go see the town engineer. If they're happy little campers, we're happy campers. But I believe their jurisdictions are implicated here, and it's a standard condition the board always...
Okay. Thank you.
Right now, the property has no permit for a commercial curb cut. It has a residential curb cut. So you have to get the permit, and that will be... the permit will be to use the existing commercial curb cut. That's what the permits will be. But they have to get it as part of our approval.
Any other comments? Yes, Paul?
There's been a lot of discussion on this project with the design review committee, and as a result, a number of changes have been made. I'm just curious. Have we gotten the final report from the design review committee of the most recent changes?
Paul, the design review committee offers the planning board and the applicant some recommendations. They're not dispositive for this board. This board makes those determinations.
But it's an advisory board to this board?
I'm sorry?
It's an advisory committee to this board?
Only advisory. This is a site plan review, so we're looking at the parking layout, the lighting, and the landscaping and whatnot. You have the report back from your engineers and from your planning staff. There's a design review committee opinion on some matters here, but for a plan review, quite frankly, it has no standing. And I don't want to see the board give it any kind of evidentiary weight because it sometimes skews this conversation, skews the debate into areas that really, under a site plan review, the board has absolutely no authority. So I'd ask you to somewhat discount that at this point, Paul, and just go on the site plan that you see in front of you and the reports that you have from the staff and engineers.
The other thing concerns me a little bit. The last meeting we had, we had a number of discussions on neighbors, the hotels, saying they're not bothered by it because people are not there during the day. I think that's a colloquial comment. There's also comments about the Falmouth Housing Corporation being concerned with the residential facilities, and that was kind of dismissed. But there is a letter objecting to that particular facility there, and I think that should be noted. At the last meeting, we kind of dismissed these things as if they were not important. I think they are important, and I don't think they should be just dismissed outright. I'm not saying anything more than that. I think the impression given last time was that these things don't count. I think they do count.
Let me take a step back. And we've had this conversation as a planning board many times. This site plan review... remember, we had the tutorial on site plan reviews versus special permits? The use in front of you is allowed as a matter of right. There's an impression that the public has when this board sits having what they consider to be a public discussion that you have some sort of discretionary authority, and you don't. It's not a special permit. If they wanted to put a gasoline station there tomorrow, put any of its odors or whatever, and have the settling torches and do bodywork, it's a use in the district as a matter of right. So folks out there in the public think you have some sort of potentiary powers to say, "You can't do this or do that," or whatever. But this is just a site plan review. It's not even a permit. Remember, I taught you that? It's a letter that goes to the building commissioner that he attaches to a building permit. So yes, I think it's important that we listen to the public and listen to their concerns, but I think it's also important that this board and the public understands that sometimes this board simply lacks the jurisdiction. And in this case, you lack the jurisdiction. And we've had this discussion many times. I don't want you to think I'm being the skunk at the picnic. I'm just giving you the rough with the spoon. Site plan review is just that, a review of the site plan that goes down to the building.
And there are certain parameters that we can look at in the design of the buildings and not what I...
And the architecture of the building or whether it's a use that's allowed in this district or not. If it was a use not allowed in the district, then I'd say they didn't have standing in front of you. But once town meeting says you can have retail sales or gasoline stations or Burger Kings or whatnot, this board has no say. You need to go back to the legislative body and change it back to something else. So it's an administrative review. You don't have the ability to deny it. I've seen it once in 25 years in front of this board, and it was such an egregious plan. It deserved... it didn't lend itself to any reasonable condition of approval. So that's just... I'm just giving it the way it is. And I think the board needs to have another discussion sooner or later out there about site plan review and the impression it offers the public that the board is acting as a discretionary special permit granting authority when you're not.
Right next to it, there is a fast-food restaurant which generates more traffic, more noise in the summer. People coming in there with radios and tape explain. This site is gonna have none of that.
Yeah. It's been testified to us. If the doors ever close, there just won't be a noise issue. So we could hold them to that. There's a change that I'd like to see made because the paragraph says "A driveway opening has been provided to the Falmouth Mall." And if somebody looks back at this five years from now, it has not been provided by the proponent of this plan. It exists. So I think I'd like to have that corrected, too.
There is an existing driveway opening to the Falmouth Mall which will be available for the applicant's use.
Yeah. Well, you can just change that by eliminating three words and put in the word "exists."
Right.
So, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments on this decision? Paul?
I think the concern I have is this is by right. I understand that. I'm not making that argument, and you can put that facility in there. But we're also looking at a situation where the town has requested Cape Cod Commission to do an evaluation of the downtown area from the Green to Sandwich Road, including this area. At T-Ticket Park it there. There's a number of improvements being made there. And I think what we really need to do is concentrate on focusing in on what that particular recommendation is going to be. Maybe zoning changes are things that we would like to see in that area. But I'm not arguing the point. There is a right here for them to do that here. But I think the long-term situation is what's concerning me a little bit. The improvements are being made, and this may or may not fit in with what they would recommend. And I know it's a timing issue, but I just want to make that point.
Amen. The board should hopefully be planning this area more than regulating it. But if that's what the fact of the matter is, we're on the current zoning, and you will.
Yeah. So the sooner we get to it, the better, as you just mentioned.
I've asked four times now to have input into the scope of work, and we don't hear anything. So that's a second issue, but I think we need to talk about that later.
You can't make a site plan determination based upon what some other agency might at some point determine. We just can't do that. We are under the time constraints to issue a determination on this site plan. We have a motion, and I think it's a good motion.
Yeah. It's been moved and seconded.
Yes.
If there are no further comments from the board, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm gonna oppose it.
You're gonna oppose it? Okay. Abstained? One more? So it does pass?
You want me to get the...
Yes, please. Thank you.
If you read the short one, then I'll read the long one.
Okay. Next on our agenda, applicant Stephen Leaf, the site plan review modification to add a seventh unit on 1.69 acres located at 56 Carriage Shop Road, East Falmouth. And we do have a draft motion before us. If somebody would like to read that, and then we can have discussion on it, or we can have discussion and go to the draft motion.
I'll read it if you'd like.
Okay.
Okay. Draft motion that the planning board vote to approve the application of Stephen Leaf under Article 39, Site Plan Review of the zoning bylaw for a plan entitled Certified Plot Plan, 56 Carriage Shop Road, East Falmouth, prepared by Cape and Islands Engineering, dated January 30, 2014, revised March 17, 2014. Scale is noted with the following findings and conditions. Findings: The applicant represents a modification of the planning board's decision of November 16, 2004 that approved the design for six units. All the conditions issued under this previous decision will remain in effect except that the board allows the substitution of the above referenced plan. Conditions: The plan shall be constructed as approved. Any changes shall be reviewed by the planning board to determine if a modification of this decision is necessary. Pursuant to Chapter 240-183B of the zoning bylaw, no permit for full or partial occupancy shall be issued until the planning board is satisfied that the conditions of this approval and predecessor approvals have been met.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Discussion. Yes, Ralph?
All right. Under findings, there's really no reference to the fact that they're asking to add an additional unit. Now, there is reference to the above plan, but without having to... in the future, if someone were to look at this, they would have to do a lot more digging and research than if we added to the findings the simple fact that which adds one additional unit. Or you can say, or it increases it up to seven units. So I would ask that we... I would like to amend the motion that under findings, we say after the end of the above referenced plan, add the words "which adds one additional unit."
I'll second that as an amendment.
Where is that, Ralph?
Under findings.
The six units should put a comma, and he says, "Which adds one additional unit." That's the modification. That's clarifying what the modification is.
Okay.
Which adds one additional unit.
Okay. It's been moved?
And seconded.
And seconded. Further discussion on that? All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Any further comments?
On the motion as amended?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
I made an assumption that the amendment stuck when we voted it. Further comments? I have just a little bit of a concern because originally, the proposed porch on Unit 6, the existing foundation, it was six feet away. Now, our drawing shows it as ten feet away. However, Mr. Costas said it's actually 12 feet away, and it seems to be a meandering distance.
It would be, Pat, whatever is on that certified plan in front of you.
Okay. So it has to be maintained as to the plan in front of us, 10 feet.
The dated January 30, revised March 17. So that's the distance. That's certified.
Okay.
That's what you're voting.
All right. Are there any other comments or questions on this plan? Okay. If everybody's satisfied, we will vote the motion as amended. Yes?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Thank you.
Now, we move on to... Oh, dear. I haven't read it yet. Okay. We move on to the definitive plan for Doctors Lowe. Applicant Dr. Frederick Low, definitive plan to subdivide 4.57 acres and four lots located at 14 and Lot Zero Chase Road and 18 Low Way. And we do have a draft motion here for that as well. You may.
Move that the planning board vote to approve the application of Frederick and Barbara Low under Article 4, definitive plan, Chapter 205, subdivision regulations of the town of Falmouth
of Falmouth for a plan entitled, "Deductive Subdivision Plan Prepared for Doctors Frederick and Barbara Lowe - Low Way - Falmouth," closed quote, "prepared by BSS Design, dated February 10, 2014, scale 1 inch equals 40 feet, together with a road improvement plan of the same title with the following findings and conditions." Findings: This application represents a modification of the planning board's May 8, 1991, decision creating Low Way. Here, the applicant seeks to add an additional two lots and proposes to modify the construction standards for Low Way as presented in the road improvement plan referenced above. A list of waivers from the planning board's rules and regulations in the form of a letter dated February 11, 2014, from BSS Design has been submitted and incorporated by reference here. Except as modified by this decision, the board finds these waivers acceptable, consistent with the typical roadway design found in the neighborhood while still providing suitable access to the lots in the subdivision. The site is located in the West Falmouth Harbor Coastal Pond Overages. In view of an environmental impact report, the applicant has agreed to install on lots three and four septic systems with enhanced nitrogen removal. The board finds this acceptable and will condition this decision accordingly. Waivers: The planning board grants those waivers found in the BSS letter on February 11th referenced above, except as modified by the conditions below. Conditions: One, Low Way along its entire length will be reconstructed according to the standard cross-section found on the road improvement plan, except that two-foot shoulders shall be divided in addition to the 14-foot traveled way. The T-turnaround shall be constructed to subdivision standards as per the Falmouth Fire Department referral, except that by tumulus pavement is not required. Two, Lots Two and Three shall have septic systems with enhanced nitrogen removal as approved by the Board of Health and the Department of Environmental Protection. Three, Town water shall be provided to all lots and a fire hydrant installed as per the road improvement plan. Four, A suitable bond or covenant shall be submitted within six months of this decision, or the board may take action to rescind this plan. Lots One and Four shall not be subject to this covenant.
Keep going.
Yeah, one on the back.
Five. Prior to the final release of covenant above, the applicant shall provide an electronic version of the subdivision plan in a portable documented PDF format.
It's been moved, do I have a second?
Is there a typo? It says Lots One and Four shall not be subject to this covenant? Isn't it Lot One and Two?
Yeah, it should be One and Two. You're right. Right. Okay. So I won't even say that's an amendment to it, I'm just gonna say, oops, typo, and I need a second.
Okay.
For the correction of the typo.
I'll second the amendment to correct.
Not even an amendment, it's just a typo, we correct it. Okay, and Doug seconded the motion. So it's been moved and seconded, is there a discussion on this motion? Ralph?
Yes. We granted nine waivers for this subdivision, and I believe, I have a note here that, first of all, the road is private, and I had in my notes that possibly we could place a note on the plan to say that there'd be no plowing and trash pickup on this road. This road is not being required to be paved, and it needs to be maintained by the subdivision. And so I would offer an amendment, number six, to the conditions, that a note be placed on the plan, I'm sorry, a note on the plan shall indicate no plowing, grading, or trash pickup shall be provided by the town.
I have a comment, the Crane property was one foot less wide than the Clarence', and we didn't require those two things for that, that it was only 17 foot wide. This is 18, 14 and two-foot shoulder, 18, and that was my concern there, and we had no problem with it there, and their engineer even said that the trash ducks have no problem. So I think we need to be consistent.
Does the town currently plow this? I think it most likely does. We don't know.
I would make a...
Wait a minute, I asked a question, Rich.
In the past, when you've had these roadways with this level of construction, the board has in the past sometimes placed a note saying that snow plowing and trash will be the responsibility of the private property owners. So you have done this in the past, just so you know.
I'd make a point here that these properties, precisely because of these waivers, are going to have enhanced value, which means the people will be paying more in taxes than I'm paying, certainly, on a fully paved road where I get all those services. I don't think we need to be punitive about this. I think we need to recognize that the reason for those waivers is a good reason. It's not to cheap out, to save money, because I'm sure these people are willing to put in the amount of money that they are capable of if it were necessary. We heard one of people objecting to this came in, some of people who were objecting to the subdivision, but their concerns were that it not become an overdeveloped road with sidewalks and with pavement and all, that's what their concerns were, because they recognized that that would destroy the value of their properties as well. So I would be against any such amendment, I'm sorry.
You mean leave it as it is, and if the town currently plows it and removes the trash, fine, if it doesn't, well, fine, too.
But you don't change it.
Mm-hmm. So we just leave it out by omission?
I have every question that you ask for a second to my motion before we continue further discussion.
Is there a second to Ralph's motion?
I'll second the motion for discussion purposes.
Okay. So is there further discussion on Ralph's motion? Rich already made a comment on this. Yes, Ralph?
Right, I do not consider what I'm saying punitive in the least. I also feel as though we have an obligation to insist that people that ask for these kinds of waivers, and this number of waivers that are bypassing the fact that we're not requiring them to plow the road, or to pave the road, we're not requiring a new road profile, we're not changing, they're asking for a waiver on the width, all of these things pertain to the road, and I think that it's imperative that the planning board make the developers understand that they're saving an enormous amount of money by asking for these waivers, so therefore the responsibility of maintaining the road and not receiving trash pickup on there is part of the negotiation here.
Again, Madam Chair, that is punitive and coercive, and it is unnecessary here, where the waivers being sought are going to enhance the neighborhood. The waivers being sought are not going to enhance the...
Okay, we heard your point.
I'd agree with Ralph, but...
Jim, you have a comment?
Oh, Richard actually interrupted, but I agree, that's what I was gonna say.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments on that? Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we do not have trash pickup.
No, no, that isn't, that was not my motion, Madam Chairman. I said that I would, my motion was to add condition number six, that a note be placed on the plan shall indicate no plowing, grading, or trash pickup shall be provided by the town. That was my motion.
Okay, and it's been seconded. If there are no further comments, all in favor? All opposed?
I'm not gonna go with that.
Okay. So one in favor and the rest opposed. So, we have, we still have the main motion in front of us. Are there any further comments on it? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stay. So there's...
I'm opposed.
One opposed. Moving on. Discussion. Excuse me. Applicant Sun Elite LLC, modification of a definitive plan to waive the requirement for a sidewalk on Sunrise Lane and make drainage improvements on Crow Road. Discussion, please. Who's discussion?
I do?
Yeah.
I don't know if this is the appropriate time, can we talk about other things on Crow Road and conditioning it, that they finished, other areas that we haven't even discussed?
No. Because this is the only thing, we're looking, they're asking for a change to their definitive plan on...
So we're not talking about releasing the bond, then?
No.
Fine.
Where if we vote on this and we say, okay, they've requested that they don't have to finish the sidewalk, and they have requested that the changes to the drainage and the road on this are as depicted on this plan, that only modifies their definitive plan. It does not take away the punch list, it does not release their bond.
All set, no comment.
Okay.
I'm having a little bit of trouble with the syntax here. Modification of the definitive plan to waive the requirement for a sidewalk on Sunrise Lane and make drainage improvements on Crow Road, does that mean to waive the requirement for a sidewalk and waive the requirements to make drainage improvements, or does it mean to waive the requirement for a sidewalk to modify that requirement and to modify the plan to make drainage improvements? I'm not sure which way to read that, which shall we decide?
There's two tests, there's two questions. The first question is whether you're going to waive the requirement for a sidewalk.
I bet I got it.
And the second question is whether or not you will allow them to make these drainage changes on Crow Road.
Without waiving drainage changes, we're, okay, that was my question, I just had a little problem with the syntax.
So it's waive and make?
Right.
It's waive, drain, and it's waive sidewalk and maintain drain.
I'm with you.
Okay, that's what we're talking.
And make waive.
So, we've got a, this end is already developed without the sidewalk, I don't see where practically here we go at this point, and we didn't have any testimony from anybody saying they really wish they had a sidewalk there, and the representative testified that six people actually said it's fine like that, so I think we should just go ahead and waive the sidewalk unless anybody feels differently. The drainage, although we all have our opinions, it's certainly gonna be an improvement over what's there now, and I think that it's an improvement over what would have been the original plan, would be cut the pavement back and just leave it a dirt road. So at least this is some help, whether or not it's perfect and stays forever, at least it's a good start. And what's our other option, to go back to the original plan, just ripping out the pavement, and then they'll just leave it a ruined dirt road?
Yeah, okay.
Question?
Yeah, what?
Can we condition that they pave all the way to the end?
I don't know the answer to that.
Well, let me comment on that, please.
Can I give an answer?
I agree with Doug about the sidewalks, by the way, but that's, Nancy Hayward's question last week was, assuming we do the grading changes there, wouldn't the paving it make those changes more durable? I think that's what her question was, not would the immediate effect would be the same, but wouldn't they be made more durable, in other words, wouldn't they last longer?
We should get Jim's question answered first.
Yeah, that's what you're...
No, but the question is, can we order pavement? And that's responding to that question is, I think...
Well, I'd like an answer to that, and then maybe we could...
He's asking Brian.
You're done? I don't wanna interrupt. What was the question again?
My question, can we condition this, that the road be paved all the way to the...
No.
No, we can't do that.
They're asking permission to modify the drainage. Technically, that's what's in front of you. I don't think you can really stray too far from that, both from what's been applied for, and secondly, from a practical standpoint. Remember, you can condition anything, I suppose, and then the applicant can decide to not record it or walk away, and the applicant could go back to the original decision. So you have to be careful exactly what you decide. So my guidance to the board is that you have two questions. Waive a sidewalk, you may want to tackle that one first, seems to be the easier one, and then return to the drainage question. Back and forth.
I would like to do that.
Yeah.
I'd like to do the drainage first.
Or whichever, sure.
Yeah.
I'll move who waived the sidewalk.
Wait a minute.
I'm still, we're still commenting.
You're too fast for these motions, Rich. Hold on.
You tend to be perseverative here, I just think.
If you wouldn't talk so much, maybe we could get through these.
I talk very quickly. I get to the point, I try to, frequently.
Yes.
Frequently, yes.
We love you, Rich.
I try to get to the point.
There was a comment made last week about this board approving the design, the original design, and we base our judgments on engineers that come before us and their testimony, because we're not engineers. I don't know how many of you people have been out there when it's rained. I was out there Sunday, and that road works perfectly. It's a perfect design, because it does what a road's supposed to do, it's crowned in the middle. I mean, I got down to my hands and knees and looked at the crown, no water was on the top of the road. It shed off perfectly into the berms along the side and ran right down either side. Seeing that, and having dealt with water issues as a builder for 40 years, I don't see how this is gonna do anything for that condition. I don't know how you get the water from here over to there, because all it does is it runs down here and it puddles right here. I don't see how all this is gonna do anything to alleviate all the water that runs down this gutter on there. And it does, it just forms a big puddle right in his driveway. His driveway is flooded. And to my mind, I don't care what you do here, unless you're gonna get, unless you're gonna skim the top of that road off so you pitch it to this side, that water from this side is never gonna get over there.
Okay, Mr. Barcelli told us that they're going to put a berm here to prevent the water from going down into his driveway.
How is a berm? I...
That's what he said, repeating what he said.
Well, they're also cutting back the pavement and then reinstalling the pavement with a pitch to the south side, so they're gonna try to do the best they can, and probably the best we're gonna get, other than just telling them, go back to the square one.
And then we talked about the maintenance issue, and this thing could all go Ari if this grading doesn't get done to the two degrees it's supposed to, whereas we can't make the developer maintain it, and then something like that is difficult for the homeowner to maintain, whereas catch basins would be something that the homeowner could maintain.
But we can't really direct them to do that.
I know, but I'm just saying, I don't think this is gonna work, and I couldn't vote for this plan.
Madam Chair, can we deal with the sidewalk issue as was suggested, and just get that out of the way and then...
We could, and then fight over this.
Right, that's what I was, I wanted to make a motion that we waive the sidewalks and go on from there.
Would everybody like to just get the sidewalks out of the way?
I have a quick comment on that.
Yeah.
We're about to trade off sidewalks and give these guys a really economic benefit and make their problems go away, and they still wanna leave the problem with the street. I say we swap one for the other and fix the problem and take care of the neighborhood.
Not waive the sidewalk.
Well, let it waive the sidewalks, but have the street be a regular street, the way we design streets with the crown, drainage approved by the town, paved, catch basins, and be done with it.
Get it done.
Let them take one dollar and sweep the other and solve everybody's problem. They're asking for relief, but yet they don't want to deal with this last little bit. Make them fix every, give them that.
So we give them the sidewalk.
And then put in a proper street to the end of the property line, a proper street defined by our engineering department. We're not capable of telling them whether it should pitch left or right, whether it should be gravel, up, down, we're talking about things we don't know. I say let our engineering department tell them how to build a proper street and trade the sidewalks and be done with it.
But our engineering department, we've been told, said this is okay.
It's for discussion right now, I wanna see what other people think, I'm not ready to jump into it, I'm just offering for discussion.
So hold off on the sidewalk bit for just a little bit.
I think I wanna trade, I would like to trade, I think we're swapping one, my position would be swapping one for the other, not let them, give them a benefit and make, I don't know how much it costs to build sidewalks or anything, let them take away, and then argue about whether they wanna leave a gravel road for the last 100 feet that floods the neighbors. Doesn't make sense to me.
Okay. Ralph?
I'd like to review the sidewalk issue with the people that were not on the board when this was originally approved. Sidewalks are put in there for safety. If you remove the sidewalk from Sunrise Lane, now you're forcing people to walk in the street, ride their bikes in the street, kids to play in the street, and I also want to remind this board that sidewalks... And I also want to remind this board that sidewalks in this situation were established to provide a continuity of people, pedestrians, walking from Sunrise Lane all the way down Crowell Road, which has a sidewalk, and connects to a sidewalk on the main street that's in there. So the sidewalk issue is not just something that's arbitrary here, it was put in for safety. And it was put in for a reason, because it provides the continuity for people to walk all the way from Sunrise Lane down to, what is it, Davisville, is that the name of the street? Okay. That's why it was put in. And safety is an issue that this board has always paid attention to. And I'm not in any way, shape, or form willing to compromise and trade safety for drainage. If you want drainage, insist on it, but don't give up the safety of the sidewalk.
I would also suggest that it's even more than that, too, Ralph, that there's safety, but we waive sidewalks much too easily, because the whole idea is to get this town more walkable. And if we insist on keeping the sidewalk there to connect with Crowell Road that connects with Davisville, you're promoting walking.
We have waived sidewalks in the past because they don't connect to anything.
They don't go anywhere.
But in this case, they do.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we call Mr. Ahmet's bluff, that we require full construction of sidewalks, and we require full pavement of the roadways with drainage structures. That's my motion. We call the bluff.
Okay, Rich has made, Rich has made a motion.
I'll second.
Is there a second to it?
I'll second the motion.
A motion has been made and seconded.
On your agenda, this was a discussion.
Right.
To give the board some time to discuss what's going on and give us the guidance to put a motion together for you.
Put the discussion.
Well, you're making a motion to make a decision, which is not on your agenda.
Okay.
So you need to, at least make a motion perhaps that says, I make a motion to guide the planners drafting of a decision.
I make a motion that the planner be instructed to guide a decision, to draw up a decision, which will call the developers bluff on this.
Take that word out, please. Take that word out.
Okay. Which will ignore the threat that the developer has made.
Can't prove that.
No.
So they're walking away.
No, we don't want to do...
That's what we're dealing with.
Different wording.
Yeah, but let's do different wording. We are making a motion to help the planning staff understand our clear-cut desires in the drafting of their motion.
I think what we're hearing here is we want sidewalks and we want fully paved with catch basins. Okay, I mean, as far as the merits of the thing goes, I'm fully in support of that in this particular neighborhood.
Okay, you've heard Rich's...
As far as the merits are concerned, as far as the things behind there, the things that are going on underneath, I'm not so sure of the wisdom of that, but I will suggest we go that direction.
Okay, you've heard Rich's, you've heard Rich's motion that helps direct the planning staff in this absolute discussion direction that we're taking right now. Is there a second to Rich's motion?
For discussion purposes, I will second it.
Okay, for discussion purposes only, you will second it. All right.
I have a point. I only, I agree totally with Ralph and Richard, and I don't want to take away sidewalks, but I was being sensitive to the neighbors that live on that street, and they told us they didn't want them. And that is the only reason why I was willing to trade. I don't, if it wasn't for that, I wouldn't even brought it up. And I'm just wondering, is that something we should consider or not?
The reasons that they told us they didn't want it, if I remember, is that it would interfere with the driveways that they have already constructed, some of which are cobble, and it would interfere with their landscaping.
Absolutely.
Some of which they would have to rip up.
That's how I remember their comments.
So, if we want to take that into consideration, those are valid comments.
I haven't walked and driven that area recently. I really don't see where sidewalks would really interfere with anybody's landscaping. In fact, my wife, who's a master gardener, said this is pretty barren, and there's absolutely no landscaping happening here. So I don't think a sidewalk would interfere with any landscaping. And, you know, Ralph has brought me back around to reminding us about the purpose for sidewalks and the importance of them, and the fact that these do connect, and if you have houses that are going to have children in them that are going to go to school, it's a good thing.
Something just dawned on me, too. If there was ever anybody that was handicapped and wanted to walk, and we were forcing them to the street, we're doing the wrong thing.
Yeah.
So I changed my position and totally agree with Ralph.
Jim's position was practical, and I'm suggesting that we forget about being practical, like Brian suggested to you, and we just go on principle. If we're going to go on principle, then we ask him to draw up a motion that will require all the sidewalks, will require fully paved roadways with catch basins. That's principle, that's what the rules require, and we can do that, and that's certainly within our authority.
Okay, just another comment about the drainage. Some words we heard were typical, standard, most cost-effective. To me, this isn't a typical or a standard situation here, because this really does run downhill. And as far as being most cost-effective, it would have been more cost-effective if he did this 10 years ago. So I don't really give a rat's batoot about whether it's cost-effective for the developer.
Madam Chair, could I suggest we don't need to talk about this for another half an hour? Everything that's been said has already been said, everything that can be said. We know what the issues are, there are the practical concern of we are in a coercive situation, there is practicality here versus principle. If we want to go with principle, it's very easy to do, we know what it is. We can go round and around and around on all these other things, and we're not going to get any clearer than that. So I'd suggest that we just move on the motion that I just made and move on.
But I also want to remind you of Brian's comment, that it would be very difficult for us to require that the applicant pave all the way down to the end. Because it wasn't required in his original...
Does the applicant have the option, if we are forcing him to do the sidewalks, does he then have the option to revert back to his original plan, which is just to cut the line here and just rip out that pavement and do no more drainage?
Yes, he does.
So that's probably what we'll get.
But he's, we would have to put in the sidewalks, so he forfeits his deposit, right?
Just a thought.
Your decision doesn't have to be recorded, they can revert back to the original decision and the original design, which includes the sidewalk and the 2004 drainage scheme.
To me, that's...
Build it to that specification, and then whatever's left on the punch list of the 2004 decision, then they get their bond back.
I agree with Ralph's point about the sidewalks. If we go that way, though, we're probably going to just get a dirt road here with no drainage. Just, that's my guess. But the principle of requiring the sidewalks, I have to agree.
I agree, I believe the sidewalks here, this isn't a quaint neighborhood such as that, you know, we're dealing with some other parts of town.
It's brand new.
Brand new subdivision, yeah, I agree with sidewalks here, but again, that's principle. And so that's what the choice we have here is between principle and practicality in the face of a fairly coercive situation.
Well, as sometimes happens when you stand on principle, you get something that isn't ideal. So I would like, I would hasten to point that out. I think Doug may be very correct in what he's saying.
Let's decide, first of all, do we want to do that? That's what my motion is. I move that we instruct Brian to make a motion that will completely operate on principle.
I have your guidance.
He got that, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, well, did we vote that motion?
We did not, because it's continued to be discussed. And you know what, yes, Paul.
I'd just like to make a comment on the drainage. I've been concerned with that for a long, long time. And what we've heard in the testimony from the representative of the owner is that he's trying to minimize his cost. And that's exactly what the engineer said. He'd do something differently, but he's trying to do it at a cost-effective way for the owner. However you look at it, he does have one catch basin. He's only adding one more. And if he moves both of them to the end of the paved area where they should have been in the first place, it's not that big of an impact. Now, it's not up to us to design the system for him. And Mr. Borselli of Falmouth Engineering is guaranteeing in effort that this is going to work, although I do have my doubts, because a traditional road would, as Bob indicated, have a crown and drain to either side, and that would be the most effective way of dealing with the runoff. And I think that makes an awful lot of sense. But the issue seemed to be minimizing costs. That's not our concern, but it has to be a consideration for the owner. We're not trying to force him to do something he doesn't want to do, but it seems to be a more positive solution. So I'm really concerned about doing the drainage properly, because these people have been living with this flooding ever since this road was straightened out about 10 years ago, and it's a long time.
Are you saying, Paul, let me understand what you're saying, that it would be better to put, move this catch basin up to here and put another one over here?
That's correct.
Okay. And forget about the rest of this, over here.
And forget about the swell, forget about all this other work he has to do over here, just put the two catch basins at the edge of the road. And that's a minimal cost to him. It increases the catch basin cost, but according to the town, they could probably do it for about $5,000. I'm sure a contractor would charge more, but it's not a huge amount of money to do that. And it eliminates the swell area going further toward the dirt road at the end of that particular development.
And this is crowned appropriately from your observations?
Oh, yeah, yeah, the top of that road was no puddles, nothing, no rivulets or anything.
And this part of the roadway is not the developer's concern?
No.
We all agree with Paul's suggestion, I think it's a reasonable suggestion.
I don't think we should be designing the road.
That's my problem.
I think, because then we take the responsibility for the design of the road. So I don't think we should be designing it. I think what our option is to either vote this plan up or vote it down. That's our option.
Well, since we all think that Paul's suggestion is reasonable, then we vote it down, because it's inconsistent, and frankly, many of us think it's not going to work anyway. So if we don't think it's going to work, why would we vote for it?
And this is just one possible solution. There are other solutions, and the engineer needs to come up with another solution. Because we all kept, the maintenance issue on the gravel pot, if it kept coming up.
Right. From the residents, too.
Yeah, so...
Okay, well, Rich still has a motion on the floor, and it has been seconded for purposes of discussion only.
Well, Brian says he's got the drift of what we're talking about, so I'm going to withdraw the motion.
Well, there's another drift now.
No, I mean, I'll withdraw the motion, he's catching the drift of what we want, so we don't have to make a motion.
And the drift is, right now, we want to see the sidewalks, but we are dissatisfied with the roadway plan.
I think we're in agreement with that statement.
So we don't approve, that's what the motion would be.
Okay.
So...
Got it?
Okay.
So I will withdraw my motion, because Brian has the idea.
Okay. Yes, Ralph.
Right, the deadline is, the last meeting is our next meeting, which is April 15th, right? So if we inform the developer that we're going to insist on the sidewalk, and that we are still open to an alternative to the proposed drainage, the applicant would then have an opportunity to request an extension. Is that right, Brian?
The hearing is closed, hope? So it would just be an extension of time for your decision based on the record that's in front of you.
Right, right, right. So the applicant would have an opportunity to request an extension for our decision, and have an opportunity to come back to us with a different proposal for the drainage, knowing that we are going to insist on the sidewalks.
I'm trying to make sure I understand, that the hearings are closed.
Yeah, they can't come back.
They couldn't come back with any alternatives drainage schemes, do you? Because the hearing's closed, you have to make a decision on what's in front of you based on what's on the record right now. You can extend that back.
Then their other option would be to withdraw their application and start all over, right?
Or accept your decision. Unlike a zoning special permit, there's no two-year moratorium or hiatus to reapply. They can reapply tomorrow, because you'd have to rehear it no matter what. See what I'm saying?
I don't.
Okay. The withdrawal would just be a decision to go away. They would probably want to have a decision from you, listing your reasonings, here's why you think it doesn't comport with your rules and regulations. That way they have your guidance to come back, because unlike a zoning special permit denied, they have to wait up to two years for repetitive petitions. That's the zoning statutes. You're in subdivision world, in the subdivision control world, they can go back tomorrow. On the next day, there's no two-year wait. So they would probably want a decision from you, so they have something in mind.
So if we say we want the sidewalks and we have to accept what's in front of us for the drainage, then they have to either put the sidewalks in or forfeit their $40,000 bond.
Right.
And the town does the work.
Right, and, right, they could do several things. They could take your decision and say, okay, so noted, and not even record it, and go back to the original decision.
Okay.
Put the sidewalk in, rip out the pavement, go back to the original drainage design, finish the punch list, get out of Dodge, which is probably what's going to happen. Or they could take your decision and take a look at it and say, okay, well, we'll record it, we'll act on it, we'll make these improvements. It's in our light and self-interest to do so, and hopefully we have money left to our own bond. But my sense is that they'll do the lot. And that's okay.
I don't see how we could possibly speculate on what they're going to do, frankly. And they have, I mean, if you want to speculate, you can say they've got several lots that they haven't sold yet, and they've got adequate, you know, I mean, there's all kinds of possibilities here, so I'm not about to try and speculate on what they're going to do.
Well, let me make sure you understand exactly what I'm saying. They have the right to take your decision and not record it, and it's a nullity if nothing happens. Based on the circumstances that are in front of us today, and in the past, based on my experience, that'd be the logical thing to do. Whether they do it or not is speculative, correct?
It's not speculative.
But let me finish your...
Rich.
I just want the board to know that that's an option they have with your decision. So you may command things or do things and say you must do this or that, and they might just say, so noted, and logically, based on the math that's out there, the probabilities in my judgment is that's what's probably going to happen. Who knows? You're right. There are unbuilt lots that have been released from the covenant, all you have is a $40,000 bond. So remember that. So that's the parameters you're working on. If the drainage design you're not satisfied with, you are perfectly within your rights to say, we're not satisfied. The probability statement I'll make is that you're probably looking at that decision-making process reverting back to the original decision.
It's not speculative, because the applicant's representative has said that if we burden them too much, they're just going to walk away. Now, that's why I say it's calling a bluff. That's not speculative, we've heard that. So as Brian says, we look at there is one of the probabilities in light of that statement, and I agree with Brian's assessment of the probability, and that's not speculative, that's just taking probabilities based upon what has been told to us versus what would be ideal.
But I got the drift. Well, I'll put a motion together for you on this.
Paul?
I just want to add one thing also. Back in November, if you recall... we discussed the punch list items. And I know the punch list is not part of this hearing, but my understanding, the reason they haven't completed the punch list is they want to see what our decision is on this. And they will either do the punch list or not do the punch list. Well, they should do the punch list regardless of what happens here.
Absolutely.
So I think we're being manipulated here a little bit, and this is going on for far too long. The punch list was supposed to be finished by the end of last year. And here we are, April. And it hasn't been, some things have been done, I understand. So this thing is dragging on forever.
I think there'll be closure on April 15th. Is my probability statement.
I think it's important that the board recognize that whereas Rich says we're calling their bluff, they could also be calling our bluff, too. If we turn them down on this, if they rip up the surface of the road and bring it back, remember that it was testified to us that one of the reasons that the drainage was not a problem before is we had a windy dirt road through woodland here. And so if they do that, what we could end up with is a dirt road that cascades down without proper pitch or anything. So I simply want to point that out to the board, too, that there are two ways to call a bluff. It's a two-sided thing.
That may actually alleviate the situation.
And it might. We don't know.
Where the road is gravel, it was drained.
But it was curvy. Oh, you mean down here when you were observing it? Because it was a porous surface.
Yeah.
So I'm simply putting this out as something food for thought. Yes, Jim?
I just want to really take back my idea of swapping the, don't even want to do that. After Ralph pointed out, we're making a decision for sidewalks for forever for other people to live here, not just the people there, for our streets for 20 years. And his wisdom there has corrected my thinking. And I think we should put in the sidewalks as originally planned. And if we have to go back to the original plan, we have to live with it, but that's the right thing to do.
And remember, it was the original plan as to buy the board.
Yeah, so I'm comfortable with that. And if we end up getting a mess, that's what, those are the cards we're dealt. We didn't change it. That's what happened.
Rich?
I would just add a caveat there. For anyone who thinks that sidewalks are this great safety requirement, try walking from Main Street down Walker Street on the sidewalk that goes down to Prospect Street. And I'm going to tell you, for anyone, particularly anyone who has problems, you know, walking, they'd be much safer in the road where not the cars in the road. At least they'd be able to maintain their balance as opposed to being on that sidewalk. So, you know, sidewalks aren't everything they're necessarily cracked up to be. But I'm not going to argue against Ralph's position here because this is a new subdivision. It is a modern-type subdivision, and we do have that standard, and we should stay on principle there. But there's no guarantee that those sidewalks are going to remain that way because town sidewalks don't.
But this sidewalk is a connector, and that's why we voted in origin because it was a connector.
But that's no guarantee for people 20 years from now. That's all I'm playing about. That's just.
Okay, so Brian has our thoughts. And if there are no more thoughts on this topic, general correspondence and what is in here is the precinct meetings and who can attend what. Unfortunately, they are all on two nights, which doesn't allow us to have any kind of a multiplicity of representatives here.
I do eight and nine.
Okay.
Because we meet the same time, same place.
Right, and I've always done five and six, and I'd be happy to do that.
I'm in two.
Okay. So that's one and two. So we have precinct three, precinct four, and precinct seven.
I've done four and eight and nine in the past.
Do you want to do four?
I'll do four.
Okay. So we still have three and seven.
And what night is three?
Three is on Thursday and seven is on Wednesday.
I can go to three, even though I'm in nine, but I'll switch and go to three.
Okay. So we's.
What area of town is three? T-ticket? T-ticket, yeah.
It's at the Gustian.
Is it the same night as four?
No.
You're going to go to three, Doug?
I will, because there's nobody else doing it.
So we still have seven open, which is at the Wolf White Congregational Church.
And that's tomorrow night?
It's Wednesday, yeah. If we can't, we can't, guys. That's the way it is.
Rich hasn't volunteered yet, please?
He always does one.
Precinct one.
Yeah.
Yeah, I couldn't do it anyways because tomorrow night I gotta.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so precinct seven just will not have a planning board representative. And really, the only thing that's very likely to come up would be the medical marijuana bylaw. That's ours. The others have been our recommendations to be focused.
I predict we're going to take some flak on that.
Pardon?
I predict we're going to take some flak on that.
Probably.
I was at the bagel shop. I was talking with George Lephurst and Jim Cross and telling him about this is coming up at town meeting. And this person came out of the woodwork. I mean, he was like Reefer Madness coming at me about the evils of marijuana. I had said, all I had said was, you know, besides marijuana is relatively benign, and this guy, I mean, he just went off it proper. I mean, getting in my face.
One of the things that needs to be brought out is that if we do not vote this bylaw, that means that the state, if there is a proposal here for the town, can come in and say, it will be there.
Right, yeah.
So that needs to be pointed out. What we are voting for is not only the bylaw, but for local autonomy.
But we're still going to hear from the Reefer Madness people, I predict.
Oh, sure. Of course we will. Okay, okay, guys. Is there, yes, Paul?
Again, I request we see what's going on with the scope of work for the Cape Cod Commission as requested by the Board of Selectmen.
And again, I'll state that we met with the commission staff. They're back at their office, and we don't have it back yet. Once it's back, we will get it in the joint meeting with the board staff.
But clearly, there's some urgency involved in this. There's some urgency involved. This can be seen by the Santa Claus project.
This project, folks, will take probably two years.
Yeah.
We have to start soon. We've been talking about it for six months.
We met with the commission staff. As soon as I get it back, we will have it.
Thank you.
Is there a second? You want to stay here all night? All in favor?